I was a player. I didn't know if we did or not, that's why. It's the only thing I cared about. I didn't want to yell at it.
All right, Bill, here we go.
Who's got your back?
That is what I'm talking about.
I texted you right before.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. Um, may everybody stand please for the pledge? Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take your seats. Keep in mind that we are live streaming this, so anything you say is going to be picked up. Any ambient noise in the back will get picked up by these microphones. There's microphones back there, here, here, and across here. So just please keep that in mind. All right, I'd like to make a motion to open the Monday, February 26th, uh, business meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, moving forward, the first item of business is public comment. There'll be two opportunities for the public to speak. One is at the beginning of the meeting. The other is after all the agenda items have been discussed and debated, and all the resolutions have been passed or failed. So if you'd like to speak now, you have three minutes. Please step up to the podium and state your name, give your address, and then address the board.
Hi, I'm Jackie Kinda. I live at 11 Prospect Street. Um, I have a son who goes to COH, and every morning walking him to school, we have an issue crossing River Road and Hudson Street, that intersection. I have talked about this for two years, talking to the chief of police, talking to the school. I don't know what else to do, so I'm coming to the board to see if there's anything we can do. I did go around this weekend for about two and a half hours and just kind of asked people what they thought about having a crossing guard there, how, you know, the community felt about that. I did get some signatures. I don't know if the crossing guard is the solution. I am really looking for, um, the arrival and dismissal of school. I just want our kids to get to school safely. There is one, obviously, across from the firehouse. That takes care of that side, but we have nothing on our side. And I would hate for my son to go all the way up the road, to cross over at a better intersection, to come down, to then cross over again. So I look to you guys.
So are you, sorry, uh, are you talking about from the theater front to the, to the bandstand park?
Correct.
Straight across.
Yeah, so Pepatini, well, yeah, Pepatini's to the gazebo.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And we all know that that road's an issue anyway.
The problem is, though, there's also unprotected Avenue A, unprotected Duncan, unprotected, there's so many. Two alleyses, and there's a lot of unprotected walkways.
So is, and may I ask, the issue is lack of visibility, too many cars coming through too fast? Like, what's the, what's the concern? Like, what do you feel when you're doing it?
Yeah, so the other day, my neighbor, we were all, you know, they were walking and had to pull her daughter by her hood to get her away from the car. You know, it, it's, it's a bad spot. We all know that, so.
Visibility.
Yeah, so when you, even to pull up to the crosswalk, you can't see to the left. So they're going beyond the crosswalk, and our kids are trained to go by the crosswalk. So, you know, I just don't want to see anyone hit. And, you know, Duncan, they can walk down to the firehouse and cross where that is. But on our side.
Yeah.
You know, the homeland, that area, there's nothing to cross safely that way. And that's what I'm saying. My son would have to go.
Yep.
All the way up past Painters to that crosswalk where it's safer, that you can see both directions, and then walk down and then cross it.
Especially with the free shopping, when people are dropping their kids off, cutting through the municipal parking lot.
Sometimes parents trying to get their kids to school and are in a rush and drive up, and they're the ones that can be, you know, violative of the, of the speed limit. So in anticipation for this, um, I had spoken to the department heads this morning, because many of them have been here longer than me and know more about the history here, um, and also looked up whether or not there was any requirement for the village to put crossing guards out there. The crossing guard that we have now, which is, um, located in front of Storm King Engine 2, um, is there because we have no traffic control devices. So there's no stop sign there, there's no traffic light. So the kids crossing there, it's to get them from, you know, one side of Hudson Street, safely to the school on the other side. Where you're talking about, you have Idlewild coming in and connecting to River, connecting to Hudson Street, and of course, you've got Duncan coming down the other way. But there are, there is a stop sign there. There is no, you know, mandatory requirement, but there's also nothing to preclude or prohibit the board from making a decision to hire another crossing guard. So we looked it up. The crossing guard currently makes fifteen dollars an hour. It's about five thousand four hundred dollars per year for that cross, that one crossing guard. It's a two-hour-a-day assignment, one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. And also in researching, my research means talking to the people that have lived here a lot longer than me, there used to be two crossing guards. There was one crossing guard where, um, Mrs. Hogan is now positioned right at the firehouse. The other crossing guard was located, I didn't know this, it predated me.
Homeland.
Homeland, well, it was Academy and Homeland, right there, to help the kids crossing over to go to the.
Crossing when they walked.
To go to the high school.
When they walked, well.
When it was the high school. So, um, so I would open this up. I mean, I, I didn't, I mean, and I, I know of nothing that, you know, tells us we can't. I mean, obviously, there are budgetary considerations, but, um, there's nothing that says that we can't. What are the board's feelings in regards to what? Ms. Kinda, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Kinda has raised. Anybody have any feelings? I mean, obviously, we want to save kids.
How many, I know you went around and got a petition signed. How many, how many, uh?
Um.
Residents?
Well, I didn't really count. Um.
And I guess what I'm saying is this, too, is that's.
Sixty-four.
Okay.
In like two and a half hours. I just went an hour Saturday and an hour Sunday, just.
You knocked on doors?
I did.
Wow.
And you know what people said to me, "Are what are you running for?" I'm like, "I'm not."
It's crossing guard now.
What if you went in front of, what if you walked down the other side of Idlewild and then crossed that GHS where there's higher visibility? And then crossed that crosswalk, and then crossed the Duncan crosswalk?
Then you're crossing two main streets, one going this way and one going this.
With the, the last crossings with the guard.
Right, so it would be going that way to go down, but it's still.
And it crosses back over the same road.
Yeah, but the argument is not.
I get, I know what you're saying.
There's a million crosswalks in the village.
Yes, yes.
Okay? There's a million.
Yeah.
Trust me.
Now.
Payson, Cherry, Clark, I mean, there's a lot of cross.
There is so much going on, though, at that, down by where she's saying, and Cumberland Farms, and everyone's starting to park in the mornings as they come out on either side of the road. I've almost killed people. I mean, i- it's, it's, there's, there's cars coming from every single point, and buses.
And it's also hard to see left.
I don't know anybody.
Like, when you're walking to see over the cars, because we're also five, six foot. These kids are three, four feet.
I don't know anyone that allows their kids to cross at the crosswalk across from Cumberland in the morning. It's, it's too busy there.
All right, here, so here's what we will do. The board will take this under advisement. Let me do a little bit more research about this. I know some of the things that we do when we have problems with speeders is, um, you know, ask the police to pay particular attention. River Avenue happens to be one of those places where we've had considerable complaints about people speeding there, and we put the police officer, keeping in mind that we have one police officer on duty in the morning, and that police officer's positioned where the crossing guard is at the firehouse. So, so that is, um, you know, when you talk about resources, let the board consider it. I mean, like, say, I did a little research on it this morning, and I didn't know what the rules were, you know, how, what would compel you or, or impel you to do or not to do it, but it would be a board decision, and it would be a, a board position that would have to be created, correct, Joe? I mean, you just have to hire an additional crossing guard if the board went that route, correct?
Sure, maybe the school district would pay for it.
Well, they, they do have a, they do have a budget ten times what ours is.
We are providing safety for their students.
That is true.
All right.
I like to think they're all our students.
Can tie this into water somehow. Can tie this in.
Yeah, just creative part, well, who, who is the?
I wish.
Ms. Kinda.
I work down in Rockland in a school, and I have a private practice here, so.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to the board's attention.
Or?
Um, certainly. I mean, if you want to make a copy of it for me, I mean, I trust you if you say you've got.
Have that.
I, all right.
What am I going to do with this?
Sure. I'll, I will take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you.
For your consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, perfect. You know what we'll do? We will add those to the minutes. How about that? We'll add those to the official minutes.
Thank you.
All right, you got it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, anybody else wish to speak to address the board? Seeing no one, we will move on. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2024 Village Board Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12th, 2024 Village Board Special Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the Board Department reports. Oh, I didn't even introduce him, but I'd like to welcome Mr. Moore here. Mr. Moore is, uh, our part-time code enforcement officer, who is standing in for our other part-time code enforcement officer, Manny Carmona, who, um, had to be at, uh, down in Nyack tonight and wasn't able to make it. So Jimmy, thank you for being available. All right, the Treasurers report. The Open Utility Bouncers Report for the end of January reads as follows. Village Water Sewer Garbage and Penalties, sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents, with Town Water and Penalties of four hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seven cents, for a total of four hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. The warrant number one is in the amount of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and six dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the following is the monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund. The general fund revenue stands at four million six hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Two hundred and ninety-six.
Point seven.
Okay. Point and seventy-four cents, with expenditures of five million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. Water fund revenue standard, two million five hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-two cents, with expenditures of two million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and three cents. Sewer funds revenue of four hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-one cents, with expenditures of four hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Total receipts, seven million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents, or ninety-four point five eight percent in anticipated revenues, and seven million nine hundred and six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, or ninety-six point four three percent in anticipated expenditures through the end of February, I'm sorry, the end of January. The balance collective for sewer capital, five hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and one cent through January. Moving on to the Building Department, trustee Carnwright.
Report for January 2024, building permits issued, ten. Certification and compliance occupancy issued, ten. On-site inspections, thirteen. Violation, zero. Stock work orders, zero. Municipal searches, four. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspections, one. Manny Carmona, code enforcement.
Mr. Moore, anything to add to the report for this month?
Uh, I'm Mr. Cornwall, and I'm going to report.
All right, any questions for Mr. Moore?
Just, uh, have you been doing solo, uh, inspections or visits or anything, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
As well as me, he's been, uh, kind of monitoring my inspections and trying to get me free.
Awesome, thanks.
Excellent. All right, Police Department, trustee Brain.
Uh, Cornwall and Hudson Police Department Monthly Report, January 1st, 2024 through January 31st, 2024. There were four hundred and twenty-seven total calls for service. There were no felony calls, thankfully. There was one under misdemeanors and violations. There was one call regarding fraud or identity theft and one harassment or aggravated harassment. There were two arrests, one for misdemeanor and one for a violation. Vehicle and traffic, there were nine property damage accidents, four traffic summonses issued, four traffic warnings issued, twelve enforcement posts, and two speed or radar sign postings. Non-criminal activity, there were four fire response calls, one domestic incident, six alarm response calls, four noise complaints, three suspicious incident calls, eight animal complaints, one disorderly person call. And departmental assists, the department assisted the town of Cornwall PD seven times, EMS ten times, other agencies once, other police agencies once, performed three welfare checks, assisted, uh, one citizen. During the month of January, Cornwall and Hudson PD Officer P.O. Dunworth attended radar, LiDAR training and qualification at the Orange County Police Academy in Middletown. The Village of Cornwall and Hudson Police Department requests a formal resolution to purchase, on a lease-to-own basis, one either 2023 or 2024 Dodge Durango SUV patrol vehicle. Purchase would take place after March 1st, 2024, beginning of our new budget year. The total cost of the vehicle with all emergency equipment and installation, as well as a seven-year, seventy-five thousand dollar warrant, uh, mile warranty, is approximately sixty-two thousand dollars, fifteen thousand five hundred per year lease payment. That's a four-year lease to own. Um, and just to read this out before we consider that. During the month of January 2024, Cornwall and Hudson PD applied for approximately nine hundred and twenty dollars in grant funding through a permit outer carrier and under carrier vest grant. This grant funding would be used toward two future outer carrier, under carrier bulletproof vest purchases for COH PD officers. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to add? We'll do the resolution during the resolution portion.
And we'll be, that vehicle will go up for auction, I assume?
Yeah, um, we have a 2015, um, Ford Taurus Interceptor, um, that would be certain plus with a block wash.
Okay.
Okay. Um, do I have this right? Bill, you have Department of Public Works, too?
I can, but not usually.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so trustee Paleota, Department of Public Works.
January 2, 2024, trash collector for the month. I do not. Um, do, do you have that and I don't?
No, it's not I know, so.
I don't, I never got it. Okay, recycling collective for the month, twenty.
Okay, Dave, you have it, what's the number?
One oh, one oh two point one five.
One oh two point one five tons, correct? Okay, go ahead.
Recycling collective for the month, twenty-three point two zero tons. Yard waste collected for the month? Do we have that, too?
No, I think it's zero, because they're, they're not collecting.
No, we're not, yeah.
Okay. Uh, routine maintenance performed on Villa, Village vehicles, uh, pretreated roadways for predicted storms, cold patching of potholes, replacement of water pump and radiator for our old, for our wood chipper. Made temporary improvements in the area of 191-193 Mountain Road. Rebuilt, uh, 2015 pretreating salt spreader. Repairs to regulatory, regulatory, uh, road signage, stop speed, et cetera. Notes, new vehicle scanners are in the mechanic, eh, eh, in the mechanic and tra, is training on the while, putting them in service. Hmm. New case loader is on order with an approximate delivery date in June. David Hoverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Anything to add, David?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna have Christmas in April, uh, 22nd.
Twenty-second.
April 20.
April 22nd is bulk pickup.
That's the first announcement on that, correct?
Well, hold on one second.
Thank you, because it's been heavily asked.
All right, hold on one second. So April 22nd, bulk pickup.
Big day. That is a huge.
That is a big day.
We've been getting phone calls, uh, nonstop about it already.
Yeah, Christmas, it'll be coming early. All right, any trustees questions for the superintendent of the public works? None?
I was gonna schedule for April 1st and then not do it, but.
Ah, I see what you did there.
That'd be the last.
By the way, that is the reorganization meeting, when the appointments come out. All right, Water Department, trustee Carnwright.
All right. We missed a fire, just so you know.
Oh.
Yeah.
He wears fire.
It's the one with the pretty graph.
Okay. Okay, January 20.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
2024 Monthly Report. Village on, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department. Monthly production, twenty million seven hundred and ninety-four thousand gallons. Daily average, six hundred and seventy-one thousand gallons. We collected fifty-three samples in accordance with the approved water quality monitoring plan. Uh, re, repair of zinc, um, orthophosphate chemical pump at Jackson Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Blackrock Water Treatment Plant remains offline as backup supply. Uh, transmission distribution, seventy-four utility markets were completed, performed maintenance to all pressure regulating valves, uh, repairs on Tamara Lane anti-flushing device, um, thaw, uh, frozen hydrant at 41 Washington, one hundred weeks. Repaired residential curb valve, 166 Hudson, 131 Harrell, three Tamara. Water shut off on property owner's request, 131 Harrell, five First, and three Tamara meters. Uh, red commercial meters, red town and village residential meters. Three final meter readings were completed, sixteen residential water meters replaced, six meter transmitters replaced, four miscellaneous jobs completed, eight water line inspections were completed. New water meter pit installed at 152 Duncan Avenue. The Village, um, WHA funding grant application for PFAS treatment for wells was denied. We'll have to talk about that. Our public water system was selected to par, uh, participate in New York State DEC Source Water Protection Program. Installation of new water main valve and SCADA updates at the Blackrock, uh, Water Treatment Plant to begin March. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand FEMA, uh, funded. I'm not sure of the total of that, Mike will tell us. FEMA has approved our initial request for funding, um, three hundred and seventy-two thousand to repair Hasbrook Avenue's six-inch water main. We're seeking additional funding for hazard mitigation for, uh, for this water main. Staff attended winter safety training, seek authorization to purchase a mini excavator to replace a twenty-two-year-old backhoe in need of twenty-three thousand dollars in repairs. Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
Michael, anything to add?
No, I'll actually have more information on the back, the, the mini excavator at the March work session. Um, we've looked at it, looks like we can replace the backhoe, as well as replace the other mini excavator for about the same cost of buying one.
Okay.
Because of the good trade-in prices and whatnot.
Good, all right. That meeting is gonna be March 11th. I think we have the business meeting a week later, the 18th, and then the election on the 19th.
No, the 20, the.
I'm sorry, the 11th, the 19th is the election, and then the 25th is the business meeting. Okay.
So, Mike, so FEMA has approved the initial request for funding three hundred and seventy-two thousand for Hasbrook, uh, Avenue Water Main. Well, is there, that's not the total cost of that project, is it?
No, the total cost is five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, what we're looking to do is abandon the six-inch water main that's on Hasbrook and switch everybody over to the sixteen-inch, and at the same time, that will help out the town with their drainage.
Right, so.
Project.
So the bridge replacement won't affect any of that, right?
No, actually, it'll, it will help the, the bridge replacement project, because that's one of the water mains. Yeah, it goes through the creek there that we're eliminating.
Okay, thank you.
So last week, um, the town, uh, entered into a, a, the first inter-municipal agreement with the village in regard to, um, the village delivering water for the town. The village had already approved that. We did that back at our work session. Um, they did theirs, uh, last week, and so, um, that matter's been resolved, and, uh, we'll move on to the water meeting, um, which is Thursday night here, beginning at seven o'clock. So I'll talk about that further later. All right, nothing else to add, Michael?
No, sir.
All right, Fire Department, um, who am I here? I know that Chief Quinn has to be at, who was at the school tonight. So I have, I have the Chair of the Fire Commissioners here, and I have a lieutenant, I'm sorry, a captain sitting next to him, so this is, you brought the heavy hitters tonight. All right. Um, trustee Paleota, the Fire Department.
Okay, um. False alarm, wait, how am I to read this? Am I reading the percentages?
Yeah, read the percentile thing.
So false alarm, eleven point seven six. Uh, good intent, eleven point seven six percent. Service call, uh, five point eight eight. Hazmat, five point eight eight percent. Fire, eleven point seven six percent. Uh, EMS, fifty-two point nine four percent.
Okay, I gotta say one thing, Rick. I remember we were talking about this last week, uh, or at the work session, because I think that was when you, when you unveiled this. But it gives the percentages of the total number of calls, but it doesn't give us the number of calls on this pie chart, correct?
Just below the pie chart is the incident.
Oh, so this is the numbers.
Two fire calls, nine EMS calls.
I, I got it, and that's what translates to the, okay, got it, got it, got it.
Seventeen total incidents.
Okay.
And then we were, for future, we'd asked for hours.
Right.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, it's, it's tough, and I'm guessing a seven hundred is a false alarm? That's the number they use for false alarm?
That's what the software, Chris and I would have.
Got it.
Notification.
Okay, so that's not like a fire thing, that's just what the, how the software does it? Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So, uh, so incidents, uh, two fire, nine EMS, one hazmat, one service call, two good intent calls, um, and two false alarm. Uh, SQ 411 is back in service. The steering box repair was initially expected to take six months and cost over fourteen thousand dollars. Eugene Con, Conley was zealous, zealous in pursuing other options. Uh, he found a vendor in Connecticut who'd be, who would rebuild the steering boxes. He worked with mechanics from Quality to remove the steering boxes, got them to, in Connecticut, through a distributor in Congress, and reinstalled them in the rig. Had Eugene not found this solution, we would have relied on a thirty-five-year-old engine as our first due apparatus until the Fourth of July. Firefighters Phil, I'm gonna say it wrong. Karpow.
Karpowski.
Karpowski.
Karpeski.
Karpeski. Karpeski.
Karpeski.
Kevin Lindenberger, uh, Wade Knoller, John Ortiz, Lena Yang, Matt Ramsey, Lieutenant John Cap.
Capzak.
Capzak. Charles Quinn and Captain Tom Trainer completed FAST training. FAST is firefighter assistant, assist, and search team. It is some, it is sometimes called RIT or RIC, Rapid Intervention Team Crew. At a fire scene, the FAST is solely dedicated to searching for and rescuing other firefighters in distress.
All right, Mr. Commissioner, anything to add?
Two things, remind us to the board that on March 28th is the apparatus meeting here.
Already on the calendar.
Right, and the second thing is, uh, on the volunteer, um, property tax intention, did that get told? It's gotta be there by the first, we're guaranteed that's in.
I've already, I sent it.
Okay. Is there any follow-up?
I submit it, and then eventually, you know, I, I submitted it to them, and I'm waiting for them to give me a follow-up. Um, usually, they, they send me a letter back saying they received it.
That's a TikTok by March 1st.
But they, they've, I sent it to them right after the last meeting.
Okay.
How did, how did we send that? We sent that?
Yeah, I sent it, just regular mail.
Regular mail?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's been, been about two weeks since the last meeting, so it's there.
Maybe have Megan tomorrow just do a follow-up, just to make sure that, uh, that they got it, just in case.
If for some reason it isn't there, please let me know, and we'll make sure that we handle it.
Yeah, I, I sent it.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll follow up on that. Okay, what else, Rick? Anything else?
Uh, let me think of mine.
Okay, I sent an email back to you guys. Um, I did speak to Chief Armitage, um, just waiting to confirm a date for us to meet and kind of talk about firehouse, um, protocols and stuff with the DPW. So just waiting for you guys are available, just need the four, I'm sorry, the five of us, including Chief Quinn. Okay? All right, moving on to the EMS, New Windsor and Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
All right, so the report for January 2024 with respect to personnel, there's one new paramedic, Alright, so the report for January twenty-twenty-four with respect to personnel, there's one new paramedic, two new volunteers, Shannon Cohen, uh, promoted to Assistant Chief, and Stephen Palouse was promoted to Supervisor. With respect to operations, there were four hundred and sixty-six total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered. Three hundred and nineteen patients were transported, and that is a record. Two hundred and fifty-nine were New Windsor, two hundred and fifty-nine New Windsor nine-one-ones, forty-six Cornwall nine-one-ones, and fifteen Village of Cornwall and Hudson nine-one-one calls. With respect to response times, the average response time in New Windsor was seven minutes and five seconds. In Cornwall, it was five minutes and fifty-one seconds, and in Cornwall and Hudson was five minutes and twenty-three seconds. The Cornwall unit covered twelve calls in New Windsor, New Windsor covered nine calls in Cornwall and the Village. The advanced E M T program has started, this will add additional advanced providers to assist paramedics, first, first agency in the area to implement this project. A new advanced cardiac monitor was purchased to support the program, and the funds came from a grant from Assemblyman Ikus's office. And all the vehicles are in service, and a new digital crew assignment board was installed at both stations. This work was done by Assistant Chief Cohen at a cost of less than two hundred dollars. With respect to administrative, um, the open community board should be filled by the end of the month. Cornwall will provide a list by the next week of those interested in the position. The Medicare revalidation has been completed, they're working on a proof-of-concept program with the O C, Orange County Mental Health, that will add mental health professionals to be stationed with us and respond to E D P calls for assistance. A follow-up meeting will be with all interested parties is set for, well, was, in February, on February sixth. The twenty-twenty-three audit is starting, and the contact, the contract was signed with the accounting firm, Nugent-Hausler. Okay, moving forward, the Windsor fund drives has begun, and they sent out letters last month. The town of New, the town of Newburgh EMS will be hiring paramedics this year, and this is going to result in far less mutual aid to Newburgh. This will greatly reduce the number of times we need to send a paramedic to Newburgh, but will result in a loss of revenue of seven to eight thousand dollars per month. The DASD grant funding was executed, funds will be used for the new, next new ambulance at the end of twenty-twenty-four. The surplus ambulance donated by COVAC was sold to Beacon EMS, funds will go towards paying off an ambulance in Cornwall. New Windsor EMS Board members and supervisors will be attending a three-day training class regarding EMS administration and how to ensure we are in compliance with all requirements. Cohen and Big are, let's see, um, are attending a leadership seminar in Orange County, at the Orange County nine-one-one center. They're looking to have twelve providers certified as CPR instructors by the spring. They're implementing a paperless way for dispatch to provide us with run numbers and times for calls. And, um, S L C H took away their access to, St. Luke's Cornwall Hospital took away the access to search patients in their system to obtain follow-up information and patient billing information. So we have reached out, we have reached out for a solution, yet have yet to be informed, um, with respect to the result. The town of Highlands was advised, if we have to call, we have a call for them, because of them not having a duty on crew, New Windsor EMS will send them an invoice for covering the call. They were invoiced nine hundred dollars for the month of January. The twenty-twenty-four scheduled fees were up, was updated with our billing company, as well as monthly meeting to discuss the progress. And lastly, the meeting with the town in New Windsor about the twenty-twenty-four goals for updating the station, as well as Cornwall regarding the Cornwall station. And that's per Michael Biggs, the chief.
Yeah, I, I think, and I have to go back and, and look at it, but I think that this is the last year that we're in that contract with them. We signed a three-year deal with New Windsor, and I wanna say that that contract is gonna be coming up this year or in twenty-twenty-five, so we will have to renegotiate a new deal with them for ALS and for BLS, so be prepared for that. Alright, any, uh, Chief Biggs is not here, but any questions or issues with, uh, with EMS, yes ma'am?
I'd be interested to understand more of the mental health piece, um, what exactly they'll be offering.
Okay.
Is it more of a, is it going to mimic mobile mental health, where they will perform some help right there on spot or take them to the correct, um, hospital or facility, or, um, I, I don't know, I'm just curious to understand a little bit more about that.
I think it's both of those, I think they're looking for space and housing at One Clinton Street, because there is space available there. Um, they would pay to lease out the space, um, but it would not be for inpatient services, as I understand it, so it wouldn't be like people would walk in off the street and go in and say, I need to see a mental health professional. They would actually go out and respond on a call where there would be a distress call.
Right.
And then either do some type of intervention, or like you said, get them to the appropriate, uh, facility where they could be, uh, where they could be treated.
We can ask Chief to give us a, what's that? We can ask Chief Biggs.
Yep, absolutely.
And I would just wonder about the schedule of fees, uh, the update, and just see what the changes were from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Good question, Bill.
They're publishing the.
Okay.
And also, um, Mike can probably answer the, this question, what is, uh, what is advanced E M T program?
What is an advanced E M T?
It's not a paramedic.
No, there used to be, there used to be three levels, E M T B, E M T I, and E M T P, so it was basic, intermediate, and paramedic. I think they've done away with E M T I.
If you're an advanced E M T, raise your hand.
What is it?
Okay.
You can do more, you can start different treatments before a paramedic.
Got it, got it. I don't know why they did away with the intermediate, and they, cuz they used to have that intermediate step, and.
They don't do C F R as much as they used to too.
Ah, okay. Alright, thank you, okay, I think that's it for department reports, and we'll move on to the resolutions. The first one, and the board, we have discussed this, is to the issuance of a credit for water account number zero-zero-eight-five-five-six-dash-zero-zero-zero. And the resolution, as I make the motion, will read as follows. I am looking for an authorization to be given to provide a three hundred and ninety-five dollar and seventeen cent credit to water utility account zero-zero-eight-five-five-six-dash-zero-zero-zero in consideration of a real estate transaction error made when the property transferred ownership, and furthermore, a seventy-dollar final fee shall be applied to the account in accordance with village policy. I'd like to make that motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next item, um, back to the police department, lease to purchase a Dodge Durango SUV police vehicle. The Village of Cornwall and Hudson Police Department requests a formal resolution be put forth tonight to purchase or lease to own one, either twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four Dodge Durango SUV patrol vehicle. Purchase would take place after March first, twenty-twenty-four, beginning of the new C O H budget year. The total cost of vehicle with all emergency equipment installation, as well as a seven-year, seventy-five-thousand-mile warranty is approximately sixty-two thousand or fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars per year lease agreement with the four-year lease to own. I'd like to make that motion, may I have a second? Further discussion?
What's the value of the, uh, tourists that we would be trading in, or, or auctioning off? Ish, ballpark. It's fully paid out, right? We're not, we own it.
Alright. Sure.
I'll just, uh, make a note that this is off the New York State approved vendor list, so that completes the village's obligation or dispenses with the village's obligation to go out to formal bid.
The resolution is so amended to add Counselor's comments. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next item is the budget transfer of municipal tourism grant to three village committees. Um, and this one, we're gonna do a little discussion, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna push this through, but just to, just to bring everybody up to speed, the village last year put in a, um, it was a fairly easy grant to apply for, cuz I could figure out how to do it, but in for a five-thousand-dollar, um, tourism grant, um, which the village could spend to do anything that had some type of nexus towards encouraging tourism to the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. The town also put in for the same one, and blessedly, we were both awarded the five thousand dollars. Um, I spoke to the board, we had discussed it a little bit, um, and my, my idea on it was that we would, hate to use the term reward, but that we would essentially, um, um, split these funds for what I felt were the three legacy tourism-attracting volunteer organizations. The first being, um, Riverfest, which has been around since nineteen ninety-eight, um, and I pitched making a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation to them. Um, the next was to the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee, all the great work that they do to bring people in, um, to the community, and I proposed fifteen hundred dollars there. And the last was to the O G, which has been around since eighteen sixty-eight, the Storm King Engine Number Two, um, Fire Department. I, did I get it right, it's department, right? Company? Cornwall and Hudson Fire Department, um, in the amount of one thousand dollars, so that would be the split. Um, and I know Trustee Brain has an idea on kind of a different way to do this, and I felt it would be fair to allow him to make his pitch. I don't disagree with it, after you, you'll make the pitch, and I think it'll be good going forward, but this will be my push for this one.
Sure. Uh, so simply, my question and thought is, um, if we're talking about dispersing the funds as described, uh, depending on what those organizations choose to do with the money, it might defray costs for them to put on the excellent, amazing events that they put on already. Uh, Riverfest and all the special events, as well as the, the Fireman's Fair, um, which are all valid things to fund. I don't, you know, I have no qualms about doing that. The one thing, though, as I would say, with a, with a bulk of five thousand dollars in the village's hands, uh, to promote tourism, that we could potentially use that as seed money in one way, and then also allow those same three organizations to be the ones to administer a marketing campaign around it. So the thought is simply to, um, put that money down, ask a representative from each of those three groups to, uh, get together, and then pitch to our other local tourism amenities, so things that attract people to the area, like the, uh, Hudson Highlands Nature Museum, both nonprofit and commercial, so, you know, the two Alice's Coffee Shop, I have a list here that I threw, threw together, just thinking about it, um, scenic Hudson, two Alice's, Pepatini, Storm King Lounge, Storm King Arts Center, Mountain Valley Guide, Storm King Adventure Tours, Hudson Highlands Nature Center, Black Rock Forest, Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce, Orange County Tourism, and ask them to pony up a little bit of additional cash, to use this as seed money, for an overall Cornwall and Hudson marketing campaign. So you'd maybe consider combining the email list that these organizations already keep. You would ask for the brand, you'd have the brand of those participating organizations included on any collateral that's produced, uh, et cetera. And you'd have maybe a calendar of events, which would include Riverfest, Storm King Engine Company Fair, all the other special events that we do with logos of the participating organizations, so it would be maybe digital, maybe paper, whatever the configuration of the actual campaign would take, you could do it that way, so you might, if you get enough participation, double your money, or at least one and a half times your money, and be able to do some actual, you know, expand the reach of those programs, so that everything's working together synergistically, as we say.
Good word.
Corporate world.
Good word.
Uh, so, and, and, yeah, and that could offer the opportunity for each of those organizations to maybe gain from the ones that have different lists, different, uh, social media followers, et cetera, et cetera, and just maybe make a more holistic, you know, larger-scale thing. So that's the basic outline, I don't have like a detailed plan of, here's what you do day one, day two, it would be up to those organizations, cuz they're the ones who have put in the investment of attracting people to the village for the events that they put on, but it's a way to expand the outreach across all three. So there you go, that's my, that's my pitch, and that's my thought.
I don't think it's a bad idea at all, I think at this juncture, and essentially since I'm in the position now of applying for this year's similar five-thousand-dollar grant, I just looked at it as, since these are the three original, really, when you're looking at it, um, you know, tourist attraction, um, volunteer organizations that do things that, um, and as I said to you, and we talked about it before, Bill, I just, that is so granular, it makes good sense if we get a chance to flesh it out and talk about it, but with the, with time being a consideration here, because they're already planning things, like Riverfest is already actively undergoing its planning stages right now, they need to know what kind of funds they're dealing with, um, same thing with special events. I say this year, we do it to those three legacy organizations, and then we move to consider, um, next year, trying to incorporate what you are by bringing in these outside entities, that's my feeling on it, but I will open it up to Bill's other colleagues. Anybody else have a thought?
I just felt that this was, um, this was a thing that, uh, this was the type of grant, that there's no reason why I shouldn't be able to get this every year.
Still have to apply for it, but you never know, but I mean, I do think it is, I don't wanna say it's a guaranteed revenue stream, but I, I believe we have a pretty good chance of getting it every year, no guarantees, as no grants are guaranteed.
Who, who applied, who applied for this?
I did, and I'm trying to remember now who we applied to.
Through, uh.
The, um, Orange County, County Grants, um, and I think the person that gave us a heads up on it was, uh, County Legislature Hines, and said, hey, you know, do this, I mean, it was the easiest grant we ever applied for, it was two pages.
Right, right.
I mean, fairly simple thing.
I think we've gotten that before too.
Do you?
Yes.
I was not aware of that, but you, Dave, you've been around longer than me, so.
Pretty sure we have.
Do we know what the town is doing with their grant?
Um, I see, and I know Win Gold is involved in, um, handling it on their end, I do not know what their dispersal is gonna be. But I did talk to him about what I thought ours were, and if he thought, of course, you know, he's also the Chair of Riverfest, but he thought that it was a, a good distribution.
Yeah, I, Bill, I like your idea, I, but I think at this point, I, I think it's, it's almost like a warning order, it's, it's saying this is, I'd rather disperse it the way that you propose, but maybe for the, the follow-on year, since it seems like we get this quite often, at least annually, that maybe it's something that, that we set in motion, you know, we could talk about it again, but, um, we can give each one of the, uh, Riverfest and, and the Fire Department and Special Events. That way, they could spend some time coordinating amongst, within each of their own organizations, and then amongst the three of them, so. Um, and, and we might end up expanding it to, to somebody else, so, but I think it's not a, not a bad idea.
No, I think, and I think you're, you're, the whole thing behind it is the synergy of it, of getting those organizations to work with, like you said, not-for-profits as well as private industry, so. Lori Beth, any position one way or the other? Alright, then how about, let's do this for now, and Bill, we will consider, continue to talk about that, and, um, when I get word back on this year's, if it happens, we'll, we'll put something together on paper and pitch it to the board for next year. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion then for the budget transfer, which is required to do this, cuz we've already received the money, um, for the following budget amendment, I'm gonna move that we take line A three oh-nine-two county grants and move to A, as in Alpha, seven-five-five zero-point-four, cultural and patriotic, in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a tourism grant disbursement that will follow as such. Riverfest, two thousand five hundred dollars, Storm King Engine Two, one thousand dollars, and the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee, one thousand five hundred dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Do you wanna do this, do you wanna do this by roll-call vote, or just, all in favor, all in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Alright, so it's four-one.
I feel that the time is available, but.
Alright.
Understand the current, I'm reading the room, but nay, thank you.
Fair enough. Alright, moving on to two thousand twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, village insurance. Um, the Reis Group, R E I S, provided an insurance proposal in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is an increase of almost eighteen percent from last year's premium of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. In addition, the Reis Group provided an insurance proposal for V F I S Insurance, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Fire Department, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, an increase of forty-two dollars from last year. According to our Reis Group representative, premiums went up across the board this year, and I quote, "across the board." So our coverage from last year is comparable. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the Reis Group insurance proposal in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-nine cents, and the V F I S proposal, the firehouse, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, Doris, anything to add to this that I missed?
Do we have any claims for two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three?
We do have, yes.
Oh, we do?
We do have claims, yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of the reason why it went up.
Okay.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, election notice, we got a busy month this, this upcoming month. Um, the next annual election, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, will be held in the Edward C. Moulton Junior Boardroom, of which you are seated right now, of this Village Hall, three twenty-five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, on the nineteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, which is a Tuesday, between the hours of six A M and nine P M by voting machine. The candidates, offices, and terms for which is follows. Ms. Lori Beth Paleyoda, residing at twenty-one Vinebrook Avenue, is running for the position of trustee, which is a two-year position. And Mr. James P. Kane, residing at two ninety-seven Hudson Street in the village, um, is also running for a trustee position, which is also a two-year position. is also running for a trustee position, which is also a two-year position. No excitement this year. It is, it looks like there will be two open seats and two people vying for those two open seats. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village clerk to publish the aforementioned notice. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, I'd like to set the public hearing for municipal, um, Separate Storm Sewer Systems, or the MS4 Audit. So I'm gonna introduce the filing resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Village Board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider the adoption of the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, or MS4 Audit, now therefore it is hereby resolved that the Village Board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the project in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, SECR, and Part 617 of the Regulations Implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and it is further resolved that the Village Board hereby classified the action as an unlisted action under SECR, and it is further resolved that a public hearing be held by the Village Board to receive comments and suggestions regarding the audit of the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, MS4, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed project in accord with SECR on March 25th, 2024, at 7:01 p.m. at the Village Hall located at 325 Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now for some, some nice things. We're gonna accept a donation from the Cornwall Yacht Club, which is intended as a gift to the Cornwall and Hudson Fire Department. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge a gift from the Cornwall Yacht Club. A seasonal boat slip for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson's fireboat has been donated. The gift has a value of $2,470 per annum. It has been noted that the fireboat moored at the Cornwall Yacht Club is one of very few on this section of the Hudson River. So this is a very generous donation by the yacht club, and, um, Mike, how many years have we had the boat docked down there at the yacht club?
We got that boat, I believe, in 2016. It was the year after the kayak incident.
Wow. Where the, where the guy drowned, the couple went out, and?
No.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Terribly drowned?
Depends if you watch Netflix.
Did drown.
That's true. All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to the Cornwall Yacht Club for that. Next, I'd like to accept a donation on behalf of the Fire Department. I'd like to acknowledge that a gift came from a Mr. Ronald Hudson. Mr. Ronald Hudson donated $100 to the Storm King Engine Company Number Two. The donation is in gratitude for the department's response to a fire at Five Academy Avenue. So, um, any background on the fire? Do you guys remember? Captain, Assistant Chief? Any, do you remember the Five Academy Avenue fire?
I'll give my time to the incident commander.
Oh, all right, with Mr. Resident Commander.
Yeah, so the, the residents, they, they were having a fire in their wood stove. They, they sensed an abnormal event occurring inside the chimney. We got there, they had a small fire in the chimney itself that was extinguished by our personnel, and no damage was done to the, to the building. It was all contained to the interior of the chimney.
Did you have to get on the roof to do that?
Yep.
Wow, okay, all right, well, obviously, Mr. Hudson appreciated your efforts, and, uh, $100 will be donated to the Storm King Fire Company on, uh, um, on, on his behalf. So, um, any further discussion? I got a second, right? All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move it.
He mentions here, proud grandfather of, I can't read the name.
McCooney, it looks like.
Do you know her name?
I, I don't, but I think that's the grandfather of the residents that, that lived there.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I can't, I can't make out the name either. Yep, all right, yep, all right, very, very nice. Yeah, and he actually sent it from, uh, from Campbell Hall, so, very nice of him. Okay, other business. Trustee Brain, my EV charging stations, where do we stand on that?
Ah, yes. Uh, the only change since last report is that I met with the Integra Energy, uh, team, and we went around to the proposed sites so that they could form opinions to give us a quote. So, uh, we have a, we have a quote from Real Term Energy that is outstanding. They, they've been in good communication, advising us of potential points that we've earned against the state's Climate Goals rubric, where you can earn points that aid your incentive structure. Uh, so they've, they've followed up a couple of times and said, hey, it looks like you have this many points for this and this many for this. Uh, and then Integra is the other, only other firm that has replied thus far. I had another email out to, another one off the approved list, but no response from them. NIPA, um, declined to bid or, or offer the service, and then sent me a, a long list of what their services actually are. So I guess we were, I was not asking the right questions, I guess. But what we're looking for is essentially a sort of turnkey installation management, you know, project management for the installation, scoping, et cetera, plus, uh, payments management and, um, and data management longer term, and maintenance. So it's, uh, they would subcontract with a local electrician to do the installation, trenching and all of that. And they would also work with the utility to make sure that we're getting the right incentives. So it's everything so that we're not asking the DPW or, you know,
Yep.
somebody like me who doesn't understand how electricity works to, um, to do the installation, uh, or to project manage it. They would basically do this end to end. So, uh, both of these two firms say, we do end to end, we'll, we'll do the whole thing, and they'll give us bottom line quotes that we can compare apples to apples.
Which one did the town use, do you know?
Real Term Energy.
Used Real Term.
Yeah, and they had a, a pretty low out-of-pocket after incentives, uh, and, you know, and so on.
But that one's not working yet, is that right?
No, it's not, it's not working.
I am told that, uh, one of the units arrived with a cracked front panel, and that the, uh, the manufacturer has to now set, take it back or either, or send a replacement and have it reinstalled. And whether it's a, I assume it's a component, not the entire, hopefully. And Real Term said that they have, they would not be considering that manufacturer in our installation, if that was the case.
Got it. And RPC Electric did the?
They did the install, yeah.
Okay.
And they are also, Real Term said that is who they would go with here.
Awesome, all right, thank you for that. Um, just keep me in the loop on any changes, where we're, where, where we're going with that.
I will. And I guess the question I have, again, is, do we need to continue to pursue for three quotes? I think we're looking at bottom line after incentives, something around south of $50,000. And so I guess my question is?
Per station?
No, total.
Okay, all right, okay.
And that would be for three, uh, two plug stations. Now, what I'm told, though, is that that number would drop if we wanted more, because NYSERTA steps in then, and there's additional incentives. So if you're, if you're looking to install more stations, then the incentive per station goes up, uh, in which case we might have a lower bottom line with more, more spots taken. And also, obviously, we, you know, we looked at a couple of spots, um, and in relation to plowing and things like that, we'd want to make sure that we're thinking correctly about where to put them.
I wouldn't think, you know, here at Village Hall and at, you know, Maple Avenue Extension, you know, by the bandstand, I would think that extra ones, if it, if it made sense to do it dollars and cents wise, down at the riverfront, right? I mean, would?
It depends if, like, if my, you know, each place we went, there were electric cars already parked, not at the spot, but in that parking lot. So it's like, oh, there's, you know, people would probably plug in. And so it just depends. If you, for my money, if you want to, um, the place to drive, to get traffic going is where Traffic Authority is, as we discussed, as Ginda discussed, down to the municipal lot, because that's where the businesses are. So if we want to make it an attraction where people are gonna come and plug in their car and then spend an hour while they charge, that would make sense to me, but it just depends how many spots we want to reserve. Like, you don't want to take up too many spots if you're. And then, so yeah, down at the river makes sense to me. It would be either of those two.
Because then you'd have to restrict those spots to electric vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, it would make sense. But when we were there, you know, they were like, oh, look, there's a Rivian, there's a Tesla, there's your car, you know. So like, there were three, three electric cars in the parking lot just from being there.
Okay.
And that was on a random, I forget what day, Thursday or something.
The parking lot at the school would be tough to take a spot from. It's not on off-hours from school, but, I mean, we're crammed.
Yeah.
Crammed in there.
Me and the municipal lot.
Yeah.
They're behind the bandstand.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, look at the makes of those cars, because I bet you that if there's 30 spots, there's probably four electric, I would bet. But, I mean, I, I hear you. Maybe you don't want four, you want two, maybe.
Okay, all right, moving on to, um, FYI.
I, I got one question. Put my fire chief hat on. Any of these programs, do they offer any funding to the fire departments to purchase equipment to battle these electric car fires?
Not that I've seen in the literature, but that is definitely worth asking the question.
If we're gonna be encouraging that type of vehicle, there are some things that are out there that are advantageous for the fire department to, uh, um, get, you know.
I'm assuming you have to put those out with a chemical? You can't, you're not putting those out with water?
No, it's copious amounts of water.
It is copious amounts of water.
Yep, and you just?
For a lithium battery fire?
You just keep dumping it on there.
Really?
Yep.
Now, I wrote to, uh, Assemblyman Ikas mentioned at a recent meeting, he said that their, their, you know, he just sort of blanketly said, there's funds out there for things. And so I wrote to him and asked, I didn't ask about that specifically. I said he charges, but I do know that he is very interested in funding programs that assist fire departments in being able to treat chemical, uh, battery fires.
But even, you take the fire out of the picture, if they get into car accidents, there's a good likelihood that you're cutting through the, the power cables on the, on the vehicles. So there's equipment out there you can purchase to make the vehicle think it's being charged, to, to de-energize it and whatnot.
So I will, um, I'll ask on both, both of those two.
Maybe buy a reservoir?
What's that?
Buy another reservoir.
All right. Leave the jokes to the professionals. Leave the jokes to the professionals.
Just, just some things to, to think about.
He said copious amounts of water.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just some things to think about, because as, as much as we, we want to encourage the electricity, there's, there, for every action, there's a reaction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, so.
I'll ask on both ends of that.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so under FYI, the town and the village board will be meeting here, the town council and the village board will be meeting here on Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. for the water, the joint water system meeting. That meeting will be live streamed for those that do not want to attend in person, but it will be here. And we will have an agenda published before then. The village board's next work session is Monday, March 11th at 7:00 p.m. in the work session room. At that meeting, um, gentlemen and gentlelady, we will be discussing, um, the pavilion scheduling and fees, as well as taking a look at all the fees for the bandstand, for, um, you know, other properties in the village that we, uh, that we lease out. So just be prepared, that's, to have some opinions on that, and I will present to you what we have. I'll present to you what my thoughts are on those, on what my research has indicated. Doris has done a good job of looking at close communities to ours and what they charge for things similar, so we can make sure that we're not out of whack with what we're charging, or what we're proposing to charge. All right, the village board meeting, Doris, you tell me this is?
The 25th.
Okay, so village board meeting, I'm sorry. Village board meeting is gonna be March 25th at 7:00 p.m. here, but before that, the Tuesday before that, March 19th, will be the village election, which I already gave the date and time for, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And?
Registration Day, March Day.
Oh, Village Registration Day, March 9th, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. here. Keep in mind, if you come to that, that only allows you to vote in the village election. So it does not help you in national elections. So in November, when we have the national and the state elections, the November elections here, just because you registered to vote in the village election, that does not transfer to that. You still have to do that through the county. Important stipulation. Okay, and lastly, Mr. Commissioner, I think you pointed out, the fire apparatus meeting, it's gonna be a briefing for the village board. It will be open to the public as well, if you're so inclined to attend, March 28th, right? I think it's a Thursday. Does that sound right? And I believe I scheduled it for 6:00 p.m. and not 7:00 p.m., all right? So please, trustees, make every effort to be there. I will remind you as we get closer, because we got a busy March. All right, that's it from the board. Do we have anybody that would like to speak for, during public comment? Seeing no one, I'll move to board comments. So Trustee Paleota, we'll start with you.
I don't think I have much to add. Like I said, I was interested in learning more about the mental health that's going to be brought on to the ambulance. I think that's amazing.
You know Chief, you know Chief Big, right?
Yeah, I've met him a few times. I don't know.
Yeah, I would say that would, yeah.
Absolutely, and, um.
He would love to talk to you about it.
Yeah.
Fill you in on, yeah, absolutely.
Great, yeah, that's all, um, bulk pickup.
Bulk pickup, you got it. That's right. What is it, Dave? April, what is bulk pickup?
26.
April 26th.
22nd.
22nd, you're putting out bad information.
And for, for my save, April 1st, got it.
All right, what else? Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, Trustee Brain.
Thanks to the Fire Department for assisting with that chimney fire, to generate gratitude from, from the people you helped, uh, protect. So thank you for that, and, um, and thank you, as always, to all the departments for all of the work that you do. There's one event coming Thursday that, it's a little bit of an off-kilter event. It's interesting to me. I'm gonna go to it, and I, I believe, uh, not, not speaking out of school, I hope that, I believe Superintendent Trainer is also planning to go to this. But it's at Black Rock Forest on Thursday from 1:00 to 3:45 p.m. It's, uh, a professor at Hunter College, and two of his graduate students have put together some kind of community feedback, uh, eliciting process called PELT. I don't know what it stands for, but it is basically, it's, oh, I'm sorry, it's right here, Post Extreme Event Learning Toolkit. And it's very specifically focused on the July 9th storm to seek, uh, municipal feedback on not just, you know, what happened immediately in the aftermath and everything, but also what kind of mitigation and resilience can be built out. It's, I guess there's a climate resilience project at Hunter, and this is part of that. And so they're, you know, basically looking at the physical infrastructure and doing some kind of process. I don't know more than that, really, but, um, I have an email here from, uh, Simon Gruber, who's one of the people locally who helped put it together with, uh, that, that, uh, school, and the town, I think Supervisor Wojciechowski said, yeah, yeah, we'll have people go. And I believe, I believe Superintendent Trainer is looking, because it's at Black Rock Forest, where a lot of our water infrastructure and a lot of the threats to the water infrastructure are located, so I think that makes perfect sense. So I'm gonna check it out, but I just wanted to let anybody know. So if anybody would like to know more about it, I'll just forward this email to you, if you wish, if you haven't got it.
And I know I mentioned it to you, but did, have you made a reach out to them, or you?
I talked to Simon today, and that was one of the things.
So you're willing to be our representative to the Mudna?
Yep.
I forget what the full?
It's the Mudna Creek Watershed Association, something.
Okay, excellent. You'll just keep me in the loop on that? Now, they haven't started having their meetings yet again, right? They're looking to, to, to start their, the process again of having, um, and how often do they have them? Is it, it's not monthly?
I, is it?
Is it monthly?
No, it might be less than that.
I think it's every two months or quarterly or something.
Yeah, it's not monthly.
Yeah. Uh, so no, I have not been invited to one. Simon knows that you had suggested that I be the liaison, and he reached out, and I said, yes, happy to do it. So I will, I will certainly, and he'll be at this thing on Thursday.
And then just make sure that we add that, um, to the village clerk to our agenda, so that when you do have meetings, you give a brief out on that.
And I believe you had mentioned, or somebody had mentioned, that there was annually a $500 stipend we had paid, or a $500 fee or membership fee or something we had paid.
Whatever we have been doing before, we will continue to do, I guess.
Think it was $500 a year.
I think you're right. I think you're right, too. Anything else, Bill?
Nothing else for me that I can think of. What, what month is this? This is, uh, this is February. We're near the end of the month, and no, I've got nothing else. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Cornright, how you doing? Oh, good. All right, um, I had a couple of questions about New York Forward. The answer is no, we have not heard back from New York Forward in regards to which of the projects are getting funded. Remember, the village and the town put in a total of 10 projects to include municipal projects, not-for-profit projects, and private sector projects. We'll find out when we find out, but no, we have not. The next slate of, of recipients, um, have already been announced. They told us that that's what was gonna happen, that this, this year, the 2024 recipients would know before we find out when we're, what projects are getting funded. I actually met with the Village of Montgomery leadership and the Village of Highland Falls leadership to walk them through the process that went, went through and to advise them that the next year of their life will not be the same, and that they're going to be investing some time in it. But we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're gonna know something in March, and obviously, as soon as we find out, we will very publicly share how the $4.5 million is gonna be spent, so I'll keep you in the loop on that. And that's it. Are there any alibis?
Yeah, I have one.
Did I go past you?
I have nothing.
I'm sorry.
I have an alibi here, sorry.
All right, alibi.
Donahue, uh, Donahue Farm, I did attend their meeting, excuse me, last week or the week before. Not, I
Not, I won't take up much time, but one question was, they were, they wanted to understand the village's ownership of Donahue's Lane, and understand historically where it stands, where it stands now, what, what the, what the deal is there to say it very plainly. And then the, you know, a few other points, they're looking to get a roofing estimate for the residents there from One Time Carpentry.
Good.
And then Trustee Conrad told me that he is pointing out about the power. Apparently, there's been disconnect where Central Hudson believes they're waiting for us to say something, and we've been saying, don't you have a job number, aren't you gonna do it? So, so we'll.
Do we think that there might potentially be a donor on the, on the roof aspect? Because I think that all the.
Yeah, oh, no, no, there was a roof, the shed roof was a donor.
Was taken care by, by a donor, and remember, we expended almost all of our funds, because the board had, had, what did we do, like a hundred and sixty thousand?
A hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And I think we used a big chunk of that on the, on the.
The roof, we did.
Yeah, so, okay, but yes, Ms. Donahue's house desperately needs to be moved.
And they agreed on a minimum schedule of, slightly reduced to eight per year instead of twelve, so skipping July and August, and December and January.
And Dave Work is still, is still chairing it?
Dave Work is chair, and, you know, with the combination, it's Dave Work, and they are looking to, they wanna recruit people for subcommittees to join on to the garden committee, et cetera, they wanna expand the garden this year, there's a few other things, but the residence roofing question and the, and the Donahue's Lane were, jumped out to me.
Why we're on it, Dave Halverson, two things, you know, I mean, it's a stream of consciousness. The two deer stands, the, not the client, the ladder deer stands, we took, we took those apart, correct?
We took down what we could.
Got it.
Some of the stuff, the trees have grown around it.
So they've been there, they've been there a long time.
The trees.
Got it. But there's no way to access them, right?
No.
You took everything off that nobody can get to them, okay. All right, I'm good with that for now. I'm just wondering about liability issues, if, since we own the property, if somebody tries to access it and falls, and then sues the village. I'm wondering if that's something, Joe, is that something? There were two deer stands that were left on the Donahue property. I don't know if somebody was using them to watch birds, or somebody used them to, to hunt with archery, or whatever, but they weren't climbers, meaning the ones that you take up, and then you take them down, and you're done. They were the ones that had a ladder on it, and they bolted into the tree. So we didn't, we couldn't find whose they were, we put the, so they're still there, they took off what they could. Do we have any concerns if there's a, up in a tree and somebody climbs up there to try to get there? It is what it is. It is what it is.
Well, it's a tree. The trespasser put it there.
And then, right.
Sign on the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You can't remove the rest of the stand?
Well, I think it's off the ground, and Dave said that the tree had grown.
It grew up in the tree. It's grown around it.
Historical deer stands that have been there.
So the tree kind of grew into it.
Yeah. Dave, do your best, that's my.
We did.
All right, all right, Dave, number two.